Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, July 13, 2021. I am Commissioner and Chair Rick Vest. On my left is Commissioner and Vice Chair Deb Shore. To her left is Commissioner Sean Flowerday. On my right is Commissioner Roma Amundson, and to her right, Commissioner Krista Yocum. Will you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin the meeting.
A copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all material to be discussed today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed on the county's website at lancasterne.gov. The gen item one are minutes, approving the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, July 6, 2021.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any comments? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through July 13, 2021, and this needs to be amended to include a claim from engineering.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Nelson, County Clerk's Office. We did have an amendment this week to the claims report. The claims report that was posted did not include, we had some claims come through late last week from the engineer's office that kind of got tied up in the year-end encumbrance process and that kind of thing, and we wanted to make sure these claims got paid timely. And so, we do have an amendment today to the claims report.
So, how would you have us phrase that, Kevin? We're just amending to include claims from the engineering department?
Correct.
Okay.
I move that we approve all the claims processed through the 13th of July, and also to be amended with the engineering claims.
I'll second.
And that is for the total of the eight outlined on the special handout we received, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Thank you for clarifying. We have a motion and a second to approve the claims with the addition of the engineering claims. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is a special presentation. Commissioners Award of Excellence for June 2021 to Kip Spire, County Engineering, in a category of valor.
Do we have a resolution here?
Yes.
Would Pam, should we go ahead and read the resolution first?
Yeah, Dan can read that.
Kip Spire has been selected as the Commissioners Award of Excellence winner for June 2021. Kip works as an equipment operator, too, and began working for the county on April 30, 2015. He was nominated by Steve Spader, Assistant Maintenance Supervisor, in a category of valor. On February 13, 2021, he was out plying snow when he came across a vehicle that was stuck in the ditch. It was sub-zero temperatures, and a citizen had been stranded in that vehicle for almost six hours. Kip brought the citizen into his truck to warm up and monitored his hands and other extremities for frostbite. While warming up in the truck, Kip let him use his cellphone to make arrangements for a ride, and then took him to a meeting spot to be picked up. Once the citizen had been picked up, Kip continued on his route plying snow. For these reasons, we pleased to award Kip Spire with the Commissioners Award of Excellence for the month of June 2021.
Thank you. Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. You know, I never realized how short I am until these guys stand behind me, which, like, guys, at least kind of, you know, act like maybe I'm not so short. That being said, Kip has been with our department since 2015. He has been an excellent member of the engineering department. You have seen him up here before when he has received awards for his equipment operation at the winter maintenance. In addition, Kip, like many other of our employees, is a volunteer fireman. He has served for over 30 years, both being a fireman and an EMT in Tecumseh, and so he drives up from Tecumseh for this job every day, and he's definitely one of our dedicated guys. A lot of people don't realize that oftentimes out in the county, we are the first people on the scene. That is why my department has been dedicated to doing first aid and triage training so that we can assist if we are indeed the first people on the scene. And so, Kip was nominated by Steve Spader. Mr. Spader said he didn't want to do the presentation this morning, maybe next time. But that being said, I want to thank both Kip and Steve for nominating Kip. A lot of times when we're in these snow emergencies, not everything that's going on reaches my office, and so this is something that I didn't find out about immediately. But Kip is definitely deserving of this award, and he definitely made a difference to this citizen's life.
I'd just like to say thank you very much. It was, to me, I was just doing my job. I would expect anybody, you know, that comes by to try to help and render aid to anybody they could, but other than that, I'd just say thank you.
Well, Kip, you're being very humble. If I remember that series of days, that was the sub-zero polar vortex, whatever, and so while this is the category of valor, it's the category of lifesaving. And so, thank you very much for your efforts on behalf of this citizen, who I'm sure is eternally grateful as well.
Kip, on behalf of the board, I just want to say thank you so much for the person that you are, the commitment you've made to the engineering department, and then on the day in question here. It's a tremendous honor to have employees like you out there representing Lancaster County. On behalf of the board, I'd like to award you this plaque in honor of the valor that you demonstrated.
Thank you very much.
Next is number four, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one. With a single vote of the Board of Commissioners, these items are approval of. Right-of-way contracts with the following: Florence Horseman Trust, North 84th Street and Raymond Road, in a total amount of $5,977. Darren and Darcy Mikey, Southwest 114th Street and West Break Road, in an amount of $195. Grant contract funded by the Juvenile Justice Prevention Fund with Asian Community and Cultural Center for the Family Resource Program. Grant contracts funded by the Joint Budget Committee with the following: Boy Scouts of America Corner Source Council for the Scout Reach Program. Friendship Home of Lincoln for Emergency Shelter Children's Advocacy Program. Received and placed on file, quarterly reports, which are for April through June 2021, with the following: County Sheriff and County Attorney.
I move approval of the consent items. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number five, new business. 5A is a request for an exceptional circumstance award under Personnel Rule 17-14-B for Eliza Havick Corrections for One-Step Pay Increase.
Good morning. Brad Johnson, Director, Lancaster County Department of Corrections. Do you have a, is there a write-up? Do we know?
Yes. Would you like this read?
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. I'm submitting Alicia Havick for an exceptional circumstance award for salary advances within her pay grade. This submittal is for consideration for the exceptional quality work and enormous workload she assumed. As a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, employees were given emergency sick leave for various use as it related to their personal situations and the virus. This leave created a significant amount of paperwork in coordination with the Lancaster County Human Resources Department and Lancaster County payroll system. Our department processed 165 of these applications or documents. This process involved identifying if the staff member's absence was authorized, and if so, which category it fell under. Alicia then had to get a signature from the staff member and myself before sending the form downtown. In addition, she coordinated with our scheduling sergeant to make sure individuals who were going to be absent were placed in the scheduling system so coverage could be found for their shifts. She also kept track of the number of hours used or available for each individual. She maintained a communication with the individuals so we could ensure those with negative tasks could return to duty as soon as possible. She coordinated with those who had positive test results to ensure they didn't return to work until after the isolation period had expired. On top of the emergency sick leave documents, Alicia was responsible for completing the necessary FMLA paperwork as well. She accomplished these additional burdens in an organized and efficient manner. She maintained a professional and polite demeanor with those she interacted with, both inside our department and other agencies. It was very common for me to enter her office and hear her talking on the phone with one of our staff members, trying to help them understand the process or advising them on what the next steps needed to be. I had several staff members rely to me that it was very much appreciated Alicia's help during the process. At the same time this activity was occurring, the county switched to a new payroll system. This was a difficult transition for our department, and Alicia was in the middle of that process as our primary payroll administrator. We experienced many pitfalls during this implementation, which in turn created a significant amount of additional work and stress. As usual, she took the added challenge in stride and worked with our payroll team to make improvements. Based on these circumstances, I believe this award is warranted and should be approved, and it was signed by Brad Johnson.
Yeah, so Alicia is actually, her title's, she's my administrative aide, so she's kind of the liaison for me and the rest of the department, many of the other aid agencies. This last year was, had a lot of stress for her, and she's well-deserving.
Alicia, obviously you have a lot of skills and talents. You've got attention to detail, you're good with paperwork, you're good with the numbers, and you're good at working with your fellow employees. And I think the sentence in there that where Brad talks about, he hears you on the phone helping them through the process, and, you know, it was a first time for everyone, and a lot of stress for employees and families and spouses and everything. And I'm sure to have a kind, comforting voice talking them through the process certainly made things a lot easier. So, thank you for what you did, and we'll continue to do, I know.
Thank you. First of all, he orchestrated all of this. I mean, there were phone calls, texts, emails, all hours, weekends, so that was all him. A lot of people stepped up during this, you know? It was crazy for everybody. I would let Sergeant Cartwright know, she would get them in the book so that we could get people covered for shifts. Kendra Canous helped with paperwork. Nate Atkins and Jody Zimmerman helped with payroll. Karen Urick and Melody Montiel downtown were super efficient, super helpful. There was lots of phone calls there, and they were always helpful. It was stressful for everybody, you know, our personal lives, our professional lives, and my husband Kirk is the one that got the pleasure of dealing with me at night after I'd come home, so God bless him. But at the end of the day, we were all fortunate that we had an establishment that we worked for that did not shut down. You know, we still had a place that we could go to work and receive paychecks, and so many others were not fortunate. And for most of us, life has gone back to normal, but a lot of our officers and sergeants are still wearing masks to keep our inmate population safe, so I appreciate them. Thank you. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Before we let you go, we have a couple of comments from Commissioners here.
The one thing that I'd like to say is, it was very stow-worthy that you commented upon the other people who helped you and who orchestrated you. You know, in a big organization like the jail, there's one of the things that's so important, and that is teamwork, and you certainly did provide the leadership for that team.
Thank you.
And, you know, but every team has to work together, and so I think that you were really an individual who had the capabilities to make that team work.
Thank you.
So, thank you for what you've done.
Yeah, very good. Kurt, did you want to come up and say any awards, give any awards here before you took the time to be here? I wanted to give you, well, Alicia, thank you for this, and you're right, it takes a lot of people working together to make good things happen in all our departments.
Well, thank you guys for approving that emergency sick leave, because a lot of people utilize that, and they'd have been in trouble without it, so thanks for that.
You made it work. You made it fit.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Brad, thank you for being here this morning.
We were just making up.
Commissioner Flowerday?
No, no, no.
We need a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item A. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 5B is a special designated license application from K&amp;K LLC doing business as Big Ten Tavern for an event at the Shed, 22500 South 176th Street, Adams, Nebraska, on Saturday, July 17, 2021.
Morning.
Good morning, sir. Yeah, we would love to hear from you. Why don't you give us your name, and then?
My name's Kurt Contour. I own the Big Ten Tavern in Bennett, and I was asked to provide alcohol for a wedding reception at the Shed by the wedding party, so, and I didn't realize, I know it's late notice, I didn't realize that it needed to be approval, since I do designated license but mainly in town, so the city of Bennett has to approve everything.
Right.
I didn't realize something out in the county had to be approved by you guys, so that's the reason for the late.
First time through the process.
Yeah, first time outside, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, we've been notified there are some problems, and I don't know how much information you have, but the planning department has recommended that we not approve this. Have you had contact with them?
No, I'm not, I'm just dealing with the, with the bride and groom.
We would look for ways to resolve this, to go forward. Jen, we value your input here.
Well, I was just going to clear up that, yeah, the issues are with the Shed, so where the actual wedding reception is located, it's not with Big Ten, or, yeah, Big Ten Tavern. But still, yeah, there's the recommendations that you have before you in the agenda, but it's based, yeah, off the issues with the Shed.
And what's your relationship with the Shed like, sir? Are you just?
They're just patrons of the bar.
Okay.
I don't have any business affiliation or anything with them.
So, if I could just?
Yeah, please.
So, we approved their request for a special, we've been through this with the Shed before. We approved?
The special permit.
Special permit.
Was it Planning Commission?
Was it Planning Commission. But they do not, they are not adhering to some of the recommendations from county engineering, so if they held the wedding reception, they would be in violation of the special permit.
Correct, yeah. According to the letter or the email, I think, from Steve, yeah, they have not satisfied all the conditions of their special permit, so I don't think they have their building permits yet, so they shouldn't even technically have occupancy, and so that's why they recommended denial.
Okay.
So, there's some procedural things with the planning department they haven't completed.
Right.
Planning Commission recommends denial of the special permit or the designated license here?
The designated license. Yeah, the special permit is, was approved, but they have conditions that they have to meet. You know, when those come to you guys, there's a whole list of conditions, site-specific. I mean, this is kind, these are two separate things. This is, this is just kind of a top layer, you know, a special designated license for Big Ten Tavern to provide alcohol at the Shed, but the underlying issue is the Shed has not met any of their, or some of their conditions on the special permit.
Wouldn't it then be more, I'm not an attorney, feel free to tell me I'm wrong here, wouldn't it then be more appropriate to pull the special permit rather than deny the designated license? Because Mr. Carter hasn't done anything wrong, he's just, I mean, he's just been contracted.
Right.
Like, the issue isn't here, right? The issue is with?
Right. The, I mean, big picture, yes, they are, they are two separate things. The issue is that by your own process with a special designated license, you guys ask for recommendations from planning, from health, from engineering, and the sheriff's office, all based on all of this, zoning, county roads, infrastructure, everything comes into play in a, in a special designated license and your review, so, or in your review. And so, I think it would be, it would, it would be difficult for you guys to approve it based on the recommendations to deny from the departments you rely on. Even though it is separate, it's all kind of intertwined.
Which departments have recommended denial? Because the sheriff?
Sheriff, yeah, sheriff approved it, planning, health, and engineering.
Planning, health, and engineering.
And the concerns from engineering, you know, with, right now, they just have one entrance and exit, and looking at the weather that we have had recently, a crowd of 250 people, if you needed to evacuate people quickly off-site.
They've got, they've got more than one, they've got three entrances and exits.
According to what we say here?
It's on my, on my drawing. I had to provide a drawing with all the entrance and exits.
Is it to the property or to the actual building?
This is the building.
Right.
Might, to those?
We're talking about the ones to the road?
Oh, there's, there's also two to the road.
We don't have a map of that, do we, Kurt?
No. Your map of the building.
Yeah, I provided the map of the building, but I know, because one of the things they, the sheriff wanted to make sure is there's enough parking off-road so they can't be on, so there's an entrance to the, I gotta get my directions right. There's the main entrance on the south of the property, there's an also entrance/exit on the north end of the property where the parking lot is. There's two parking lots.
Well, I'm, go ahead, Roma.
Well, actually, one of the things, too, if you're, if you're talking about as many people as what there are, the Shed is not meeting the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department's requirement for onsite wastewater approval, and so I think that this would be something that would be really critical.
Yeah.
If you're talking about wastewater, that is a health, that is a health issue. I mean, the, certainly the engineering is, the road situation and everything is a concern, but I'm just thinking, how many, you said 250 people?
Yeah.
That's a lot of folks, and if you don't meet the wastewater requirements, I think that's.
What do you mean by wastewater?
Well?
Does that be like?
I'm assuming like the, I'm assuming it is going to be the flushing?
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, if I provide portable out there, because that's what I have to do at my bar in Bennett. When I, I just had one last weekend, I got another one this weekend, I have to provide porta-potties to make up for, because I've only got one bathroom inside, so I gotta provide so many porta-potties outside to adjust for that.
We have Pam coming forward. Were you addressing wastewater, Pam, or different?
No, no.
Okay, not wastewater.
Not gonna go there.
I guess, here's, and this may not work, but I'm looking for a way to hold the Shed accountable without punishing Kurt and the parties that are using the Shed, and that would mean saying yes to one event, no to future events until everything's completed, but I don't know if there's a path to get there, Jen.
I, go ahead.
Can we approve this special designated license contingent on the Shed, making those things right, which probably couldn't happen?
Before Saturday?
Which probably couldn't happen, I fully acknowledge that, but at the end, I mean...
What, because these folks are caught through, no, I mean, I guess, that, most of us wouldn't assume that the Shed, if they were offering their services, had met all the standards required.
Right. Because my, my biggest fear now is going back three days before the wedding and saying, hey, we can't do it.
Where do we go? Yeah.
It's not, it's not your fault.
It's not yours or not your client, and not the...
And it appears they've been operating for quite a while, looking at the photos on their website, and they can serve parties up to 400 people, so I'm surprised that they aren't here, and they were notified of this meeting, correct?
Yep, I'm assuming the clerk notified them.
Well.
And I know that planning has been in contact with them, so...
So, they've been doing this. This is the first time we've caught them doing this without the proper approvals?
I, I'm unaware of that.
You're in the...
Possibly, I'm assuming, if there's photos online, but I don't, I don't know.
If it's on their Facebook page, then they've been down this road before, and weren't they the ones that didn't even have the special permit, and then we had to tell them they needed it, and?
Yeah. Can we, sorry, I think the county engineer had something to add, can we get, sorry to pull you back up.
I just wondered if she had anything to say on the, you guys were talking about that.
Yeah, on the engineering side of things.
Yeah, glad to hear that.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So, I think in regards to the special permit, our concern is that we don't allow parking in county right-of-way, and so that we would not want any parking to spill out into the county right-of-way. And then in addition, we have concern for the corridor that the driveway is 100 feet wide, which is, is well past what?
100 feet long?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not, I mean, I would call long the length into the facility, so the width adjacent to the county road is 100 feet.
Got it.
Which, which can make for some really awkward situations, which is why we limit the width of the driveway. I think there's some rocks that have been added to try to limit the width of the driveway. We would like it actually to have the ditch restored. Those are the comments that we brought forward for the special permit with our concern, so... And again, I'm speaking to the special, to the special permit, not, not to this particular license. And we don't technically have a way to recommend approval for this event because there's no special permit from my department.
Right.
So, I'm not trying to be a killer of fun.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, even if we were to turn down this SDL, they could still have the event?
Technically, yeah. It would just be without a permit.
And what's the ramifications of that? I mean...
I mean, I mean, that would be up to the sheriff's department if they go out and ticket them for not having a permit approved.
That would be the shed again?
Yes. Well, I'm not, I mean, if you guys don't approve this, there's, what you're doing is just a recommendation to the liquor commission. They could approve this even with you guys denying it.
What bothers me is we've got somebody who's doing it right and paying the consequences of someone who's not completely done it right. And so that, that just chafes me a little bit. I, in a, in my Rick Vess perfect world, we would approve this permit and have the shed say, and then tell the shed that their, their license is revoked until we get the concerns of planning, health, and engineering satisfied. And then that would incur consequences on them if they continue to violate. That's kind of where I'm seeing this, but I don't know if there's a road...
Oh, we need enforcement on violators of special permits?
Well...
On the legislative agenda again.
All I'm saying is, I hate to say no to these folks when they haven't done anything, but comply with the standards as they were aware of them, so.
So we could notify the shed that their permit is revoked as of Sunday, let them get through the wedding, and then pull it?
You mean their special permit?
Yeah.
There, there's a process to go through revoking a special permit.
Our C A O is shaking his head in disappointment at us.
How are you doing over there, Dave?
And they probably have a wedding next weekend.
Right.
Well...
I would run a little bit, um, the sheriff be notified to take it down for civil or criminal penalties related to violation of zoning? And if we can go from there, then start the remedication process of the special permit.
Can we...
Based on, based on those tickets?
Can we do that process on Monday? Is that...
Well, then the event would have already happened.
Jen, that's what I was told in third grade.
Just having a hard...
Didn't expect any of this, did you?
Only anyway, so...
We will get that instruction to the sheriff first thing Monday morning that we fully expect that kind of comply. Well, we need to make a motion somewhere on something in all this chaos and...
And now back to the SDL. I mean, normally, we require two or three weeks. So, I mean, are we even going to be able to process it through?
I've, I've been in touch with the, with the liquor commission. As long as we get your approval, they're good to go.
And your facility in Bennett, you say you normally do these in Bennett?
Yep.
It's not an option at this point?
No, I'm not big enough in Bennett. Unless they want to do it outside and do it in the rain because it's supposed to rain Saturday.
Of course it is. Why would?
Spent a couple afternoons at the Big Ten Tavern and it's not big enough for 250.
No, it's not big enough for 250.
Probably not her dream wedding venue either.
No.
And I could tell you, all the audings are, covers are spoken for at this point in time.
Yeah, they are.
Krista has...
Nothing wrong with those tacos.
Yeah, I essentially have a question for Jen. It's clearly our will to allow this to go ahead and happen for, for your sake, for the bridal party's sake, right? Which, which is the better action for us to deny and then you go do what you gotta do? Because we've got the recommendations to deny? Or to approve and then, I mean, and disregard all of the recommendations that we have?
I mean, I, I can't answer that for you. You guys all know my advice on that, yeah.
I think Jen gave us her opinion earlier this morning, so.
I, I will move that we deny the special permit and let them take...
I think you mean the SDL, okay.
Yeah, that we deny the SDL. And if they go forward with the plan, that we notify the sheriff.
I'll second.
Okay, we, we have a motion to deny the special designated license for Big Ten Tavern.
Can I just ask one more question?
Please.
Are the things that they are in violation of, are they things that could be corrected in, within the timeframe for Saturday?
I cannot give a confident answer on that. I would need someone from planning. But I mean, they need building and safety, they need building permits, they, I don't, I mean, there's a bunch of, there's a whole list. So I would doubt it, but I do not know for sure.
Could I ask one question? What would be the difference if you would approve the SDL and do the permit thing Monday or whatever? Deny after or deny the SDL now? Is there a, is there a...
Well...
Call into question the entire legitimacy of county government.
That's exactly it.
It's selective enforcement of the law.
And, you know, actually, we do have, we do have a process in place, and it was very clear. Unfortunately, unfortunately, it was not abided by. And there are consequences to this.
But...
I understand, but my, because I'm, my thoughts are, is if you guys deny and I go to the liquor commission, they're gonna say, well, county commissioners denied it. They still have the option of approving it, but I'm guessing they probably won't.
And then if you serve liquor, you're in violation.
I'm in violation.
Then now you've got...
Which I'm not gonna do.
Right.
Right.
But in that case, if they deny it, then I have to go back to my groom and bride and say, hey,
Right.
we're out. Because they can't afford to supply, because under my, and I'm not, I'm just speaking on my, on a wedding, on most wedding venues, because my, I've got a son that's getting married next year. And on wedding venues that he's looking at, if you supply your own liquor and don't charge for it, there's no big deal. These people can't afford to supply their own liquor, is why they called me, and want to do what they call a cash bar, have everybody pay for it. So I'm gonna be the bearer of bad news.
Well, it's the shed that should be the bearer of the bad news. It's not, it's...
Well, but...
But he's the one with the contract.
Right, I'm with, I have no contract with the shed.
Right.
I have the contract with the bride and the groom. And I was very well unaware of all this stuff before I walked in here this morning.
Right.
So...
When we don't see this, this is the first time in my time.
Yeah, because I, I know that, I know the shed has had stuff before because we get overflow from the weddings that are out there. So I'd be stupid to say I didn't know the shed was hosting weddings, because I do.
And you, it would be a natural assumption to think that they are...
Everything's good to go, yeah.
Yeah, no, but nobody would say, I'm sure they're doing it in violation.
Yeah, because we get, we get overflow from Roca, we get overflow from the Glacier Tail Winery out there from weddings and stuff. So I just assume everything on my part.
It's such a big day for the couple.
I know, that's, that's my biggest fear.
Well...
Before the vote goes through, real quick, what, you have three real smart attorneys in this room that I've seen, well, I've seen two of you pull off miracles. I'm expecting good things.
You haven't, you haven't started sweating yet, I mean...
No way out of this?
Because we reach out to the shed and see if, what progress they could make and then revisit this on Thursday, maybe approve it at that time?
I, I, I actually, I actually need to know probably today in order to get liquor and stuff. Because I have to have a copy of my license by Thursday to get to the distributor in Omaha, the distributor here in town, so I can get my, my liquor and everything.
The best you really can do is do a denial based on, we have a motion as second for denial. Do the denial with, unless the issues are resolved and...
From what I can tell is, what I've heard, I don't think any issues can be resolved by Saturday.
Yeah, I guess...
Because it's got to do with...
But again, your timeline's way in front of Saturday. You can't wait till Saturday morning.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the worst decision.
Yeah, I mean, the bride and groom have no idea.
No, they have no clue. And I, and I didn't.
Kurt, Kurt either, the one standing there.
Yeah, as of this weekend, everything. The last time I talked to the bride and groom was Sunday, and they gave me their wish list and all that stuff, and now here I am.
Can we, okay, can we recess and see if we can get the shed people on the phone?
I think we could recess to do that, but I think it might also be a better idea to call someone from planning, see if it's even possible that any of this get done, because if it can't, then this is all for nothing.
What, what are the, so...
Yeah, I did.
Conditions to change are the engineer wants to make sure, I mean, parking is the fundamental concern regarding engineering, right? I mean, it, it, I understand we don't love the driveway. We're probably not gonna fix the driveway in time, though. But parking's the big concern, right?
Yeah, let's see if we have to...
They have to have adequate parking and can't park in the right-of-way? Okay.
Well, and the water is an issue too. I mean, what does that mean?
That's the one, that's the one that I don't see how to...
I'm, I'm sure what that means is the bathrooms, because I get the same thing every time I...
You can overcome that.
Porta-potties could handle.
I'm, I'm sure that's what the wastewater is, because I get the same thing every time I...
So they probably have in-building facilities, but not enough for 250, so they want more brought in?
Yeah, because I just had an out, I just had an outdoor event last week, or 4th of July was out last weekend? Yeah, a week ago, and I had to do the same thing. I had to bring porta-potties in to suffice the...
And then what was planning's concern?
Um, I think we're reading, we got, is that the handout you gave us?
Yeah, I think, well, Candace provided just you one of the letters from Planning Commission, I believe.
Right, it talks...
They don't even have their building permits, right?
Yeah, right.
And I think we...
Can they get, can they get...
We get through this one and we send a notice.
You don't, they, they haven't even been, been approved for occupancy.
Yeah. I mean, unfortunately, is, I mean, the people who are getting injured here are, is everyone but the shed.
Right.
And unfortunately, I don't think you guys could solve that, and I, I would advise that you don't. I think it'll, it'll come down to a private matter in the end, depending on...
Well, that's, that's all, yes, absolutely right. Everything you said is right, but that, I'm just picturing, uh, it's...
I just don't know if it's possible.
To think about the bride and groom here just because it's...
There's multiple conditions to be completed. They've not completed revised final plot plan with all the required divisions, the county engineer. Second, they've not completed the necessary building permits with Lincoln Building and Safety. Yeah, there's just a lot of things.
Those could get done this week. I mean, they could get some, I mean, assuming that everything is up to code, they just need to have a building permit issued and file two copies. That doesn't seem too much to overcome.
Assuming everything's...
I mean, again, I would suggest if you guys do want to recess, or I don't know if maybe Dave's reaching out to planning and building safety to see if that's even possible.
I would entertain a motion to recess for 10 minutes.
Do we want to recess, or do we want to process through with the other items?
Process busy.
And we just hold this item for the last item on today's agenda?
Is so we would, we can just skip forward then, you're saying? Go to item C? Do you want to, you've got a motion out there? We're gonna take a break from your issue, but if you would stay in the audience here, we'd appreciate it.
Is it better to pull the motion then, or?
No.
Okay. Okay, I would like to rescind my motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
The motions are pulled. We have no motions on item B at this time. Kurt, you can take a seat and we'll come back to you.
Or the other way around, I believe. Yeah, whatever.
It was. All right, Dan, let's move on.
C is a contract with LLC to recruit candidates for the position, the youth services center director in the amount of $15,000 plus expenses as detailed in the contract.
Move approval. Second.
The motion is second to approve item C. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Flourday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yelcom?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is an agreement between Region Five Systems and the Bridge Behavioral Health, the bridge to assist the county in Region Five by including in the services it presently provides, the detention of individuals who are in emergency protective custody. Term of granted July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
Is there anyone here to talk on this issue this morning? Seeing none, Dan, please call the roll.
Yelcom?
Yes.
Flourday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. E is a contract with BIC Construction LLC for election commission expansion. Construction cost to the county does not exceed $622,000.
Move approval. Second.
A motion and a second to approve item E. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yelcom?
Yes.
Flourday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Best?
Yes, and before we move on, Dan, to item six, and I'm sorry to cut you off, I'm going to ask for a motion, an emergency motion to discuss the ongoing situation at the event center as they prepare for the rodeo.
I move that we do that.
Add an emergency item to the agendas.
I move that we add an emergency item to the agenda.
Second.
A motion and second to add an emergency item to the agenda. Please call the roll.
Yelcom?
Yes.
Flourday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
We'll be lucky if...
Can you state the reason for emergency?
Uh, yes, we have added an emergency item to the agenda for the purpose of providing an update on the events, the catastrophic events that occurred and the recovery from those events at the Lancaster Event Center as they prepare for the arrival of the National High School Rodeo beginning on Wednesday.
This is just informational?
Yes, it is. I do listen to the attorneys when I agree with them. I know they're all...
I've gotten myself in trouble doing it too.
I love them all, but my golly, they can get in the way of stuff. But all that said, we still have one, either of them.
It's the first time she's alone with three other couples.
Well, this is, if you really want to have an exciting day, tell the attorneys three minutes before the meeting starts that you want to change the agenda. All right, so the bottom line is, we're all aware of the event...
I think we need to take a vote to add the item.
Oh, we didn't approve. I, okay, Dan, would you please call the roll?
Wait.
We did.
Where we did.
Well, we did.
To add the emergency item?
We did. Okay.
We are adding an emergency item, Jen, to the agenda. While you're slipped away, we just...
I know, I've heard the word emergency.
You can't make up stuff like this.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so we called the roll for the emergency item, and the purpose, the reason I've requested this is I did speak with Amy, and I know a number of you have, and a number of you have been present out there. Saturday, Friday, Saturday morning storm destroyed a vast amount of the stalls and the coverings for those stalls that they had put out in preparation for the arrival of the, whatever it is, 16,000 contestants for the high school rodeo. They have, thanks to the valiant efforts of so many people, and there's way too many to thank, but I just, there's a few that were mentioned to me and I want to pass along. I know Commissioner Shore's been there, received high praise for her work on Saturday, the initial day. Commissioner Amundson's been there. And Derek, Derek and Jeff, the B P N have been out there faithfully. Jim, David Saver and Mark were out there on Sunday. Rick DeBoer was there on Sunday, and I know he put out a call for additional help. And every person who volunteers is part of the successful effort to restore that property. The status as of this morning was that all the stalls from, that the event center is responsible for have been restored and covered. And so their portion of it is complete, and that's thanks to the work of so many people. The other big factor that's important to know is they did contract with a company, and I'm gonna forget the name of the company because I didn't write it down. They put up some very large barns and had big coverings over those. They are in the process of putting the coverings back over their barns, and then stalls will go inside those. What, what Amy is seeking to do at this point is to get permission from that company to go ahead and have their staff and volunteers, once a barn's covered, to go inside and install the horse stalls in order to expedite the process, because this company only has about six to eight employees, and their goal is to be done before folks start arriving, I believe, around midday tomorrow. So that's the current situation. They're still grateful for any people who can volunteer, because what they did when I was there was they had their team kind of in charge, and then the rest of us, and this may have been you all just carrying the panels, putting them in place, so they didn't have to stop progress and go get panels. And they would say, we need a long one, we need two short ones, we need a gate. They're there, they get them assembled, lock them together, and then move on. It does speed the process a great deal. So ongoing need for volunteers, please continue. Those folks who've supported, please continue to do so. There's still an opportunity. And I'm gonna give a pickleball tomorrow to go back and... tomorrow to go back and just help them get ready for this. So, just wanted to share that information. They are still confident that the rodeo will go off without a hitch. They've been doing heroic work to restore the facility back to where it was. That's the update on that.
And volunteers are needed throughout the entire time of the rodeo.
Still, okay, yep. Real opportunity, because this will be, people will leave with a picture of Lincoln that will go back to their homes and their neighbors and their communities, and we want that to be, to truly represent the spirit of our community. Okay, anything else, commissioners? With that, we can move on.
Next is number six, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on agenda, we do so at this time.
Anyone here to make public comment?
My gosh, my foot went to sleep during the whole wedding thing.
You picked a great morning to be here, sir.
My name is Gary Tharnish. Anything else for me?
I would just, before we turn the floor over to you, sir, I would just add that during public comment, commissioners are not allowed to interact with those making public comments. We're just here to receive what you have to say.
Oh, okay. Thank you for letting me know that. I didn't know that. Okay, so I love politics, but I don't do too much with it very often. However, I've been following for years, um, infrastructure, because it made a big difference for me and my business that I had for many years here in town. And now as a new realtor, I see a lot of necessity for real good infrastructure. So I've heard on the radio many times over the years, and I get it. We don't have budget money, we don't have money that we can use for infrastructure. Infrastructure's not pretty. I know if I was running for reelection, that wouldn't be the great big thing. I would put a picture of a new bridge to say, vote for me. Um, I get those things politically. What I'm here today to talk about is that I feel you have a chance now to use some new money to dedicate towards infrastructure. Um, my concerns on some of that is when we don't do, and by we, I mean, it's been decades, and not like, not like you guys walked into this and made any of a mess or anything, and floods make a difference in everything that happens over time. You know, we get that. Um, but we have some, what I view as new money, that I feel that could be directed directly towards infrastructure and get some things done that we need to. I know many of the smaller bridges in the county have been repaired at this point and replaced, which is awesome. I know there's a few remaining large bridges. If I'm correct in what I've heard of estimates before, some of those might cost in the neighborhood of two million. I know there's been times where we have to shore those up, spelled differently than your last name, Deb. And, you know, that costs, if the number I've heard correctly is anywhere from like two to four hundred thousand dollars every time that's done, but where we could replace the bridge, you know, eventually we, we would have made more sense to replace it. So I kind of want to just address some new money, which, um, I've heard, I don't know if this is true, and I know you can't comment back to me, but I would hope that you'd look into it, that the inherited, inheritance tax was budgeted at five million and eight million came in. I'd love to see that other three million put towards roads. It's some new money. So it's like you don't have to adjust the budget, you don't have to change something, you don't have to take it away from any other needed program. There's some new money there. I don't know what's going on with the twenty twenty-one American Rescue Plan Act and the money from that, but that's another, what I would consider, or the way I see it, and I'm not as knowledgeable of all, as all of you, but the way I see it, there's some new money there that could be used towards roads and, and, uh, infrastructure. Um, and if I'm correct in what I'm seeing, there certainly should be a savings to the county from, um, the state funding Medicaid and Medicaid and Medicare. Um, there may be some new money there. I'm just trying to promote ideas where you might have some new money you could put towards infrastructure. Um, that's another one. I also, you know, we all know that projects aren't ever getting cheaper. I mean, looking in real estate, people that want to build, and, you know, lumber goes up, right, Roma? I know you can't talk to me, but you're a realtor, so you know. So suddenly now building a house is ten times, a bridge is gonna cost a lot more when you're not here and the next people aren't. Um, or children are driving in this county. And, um, I saw a picture on the news, I don't know, maybe four or five years ago, where there was, it looked like some sort of a probe that was put down into a bridge to, to this, to decide if a bridge is in, gonna eminently fail, you can put a probe in, and it should only go so far, and it was like so much further, it was like, I don't even want to drive on that bridge. So I know there's concerns. And I know that, um, Ms. Dingman and you have done what you can to shore things up, so that, I'm not saying here we're all driving on unsafe roads, but, um, I'd rather see those things taken care of sooner rather than later, and I do compliment you on them and commend you on the ones that have been taken care of. I think that's great, great. Um, our county's growing. I don't see that stopping. I was just looking at statistics lately where, at least this is the first time I can kind of remember most of my friends after college left. I stayed. But, uh, we now have an influx of more people coming into Nebraska than leaving. So this county's growing, and you all know that, you see that. Um.
One minute.
Oh, I'm done? Okay.
No, one minute, one minute.
Oh, I have one more minute. Gosh, see, my mom would pay me to shut up. Um, so the growing county thing I just wanted to address, and then, um, you know, we have, um, tax revenue that's increasing. So it was like from twenty-eight billion in a set tax assessment, um, based on property values, now gone to thirty-one billion. So from twenty-eight billion to thirty-one billion, obviously you're gonna get some new money there. And I know we're gonna give some of it back, like six scooter coffees worth, but, um, I would hope some of that new money could go to roads. So that's my big things. I'm a huge promoter of infrastructure and roads, and please take some of that new money and see if you can get it into doing that.
All right. Thank you, Gary.
That's it.
Thank you for being here, sir, and for your comments. All right, that's public comment. Do we have, I saw Steve poke his head in the door, and it looked like he turned around and ran.
There's power going on, I think.
Okay.
I'll go ahead with announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a budget meeting on Tuesday, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, immediately following the regular meeting begin at nine AM and room one twelve with the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one at eight thirty AM, in room one twelve with the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, July twentieth, two thousand twenty-one at nine AM, with the Board of Equalization immediately following, in room one twelve with the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at four oh two, four four one, seven four four seven, or commish@lancaster NE dot gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit Lincoln NE dot gov. The meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
All right, we will hold, I believe we'll soon have Steve from the Planning Department here with us.
Ten minute, ten minute break?
We sure could. Why don't we can sit here and look at all these fine people and say, wow, you look nice.
They come to talk about.
We'll let you do it. You all look very nice today. And, um, all right, let's, uh, let's do, let's take ten minutes. That'll give them some time to confer, and we will come back at five after ten. Thank you all.
Stop winging it.
I just.
My problem with.
Steve is here, Ron is on his way, we're trying to call help.
Ron?
Ron, yes, from the waiting room.
Okay, oh, Ron, 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 okay. I mean, look at these pictures.
My problem with this.
Steve is here, Ron is on his way, we're trying to call him.
Ron?
Ron, yes.
Okay, oh, Ron, 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 okay. I mean, look at these pictures.